Let us go ahead and get started. I'll call this virtual meeting of the Tantascia Regional School Committee to order at 6:03 on April 29, 2020. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order sustaining certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Tantascia Regional School District Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure it's public and adequately accessible. Folks, if you cannot, folks, please go on mute. If you're not speaking, please go on mute. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Tantascia website an audio or video recording transcript or other record of the proceedings of this as soon as possible after the meeting. So, good evening, everybody. As we recall from last month, all votes that are taken via remote meetings must be done via roll call, and we must also do an attendance roll call to start the meeting. So I'll be citing your names. Please respond that you were here. Once you've indicated you're here, you can go back on mute. Please remain on mute unless you intend to speak. Mr. Hagerty from Sturbridge.
You're muted.
I like them this way.
The story of my life muted. Here.
Mrs. Noise Miller of Brimfield.
Here.
Mrs. Barnacle of Sturbridge.
Here.
Mrs. Beleza of Sturbridge.
Here.
Ms. Custance of Brimfield.
Here.
Ms. Cunningham of Brookfield.
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald of Sturbridge.
She was here, wasn't she?
She's here. She must be on mute.
She's muted.
I'm here.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Thanks.
Ms. Fitzgerald of Brookfield.
Here.
Mr. Iller of Holland.
Here.
Ms. Leo of Sturbridge.
Here.
Mrs. Randall of Wales.
Here.
Ms. Alden of Holland. Laura Alden.
I don't see her. I don't see her.
Okay. Mr. Valcor of Brimfield.
Don't see him. We're not seeing him yet.
Ms. Waters of Sturbridge.
Here.
And Mr. Goodwin of Sturbridge.
Here.
Right. By virtue of a quorum being present, we will move to the formal agenda for our meeting, which was distributed to everybody via snail mail and also electronic mail. If I can find it. All right. First item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from February 26, 2020.
So moved.
So just in an effort to make this a little bit more straightforward. So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve both the minutes of the regular session and executive session for February 26, 2020.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Hagerty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, and I think I heard Mr. Iller. Any edits, questions, discussion on the minutes? All right, seeing none, we will call for a roll call vote. Those in favor of the motion will say aye when I call your name. Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
Noise Miller.
Aye.
Barnacle.
Aye.
Beleza.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Custance.
Aye.
Fitzgerald, Michelle.
Aye.
Fitzgerald, Pam.
Aye.
Iller.
Aye.
Leo. Kristen, are you an abstention?
Muted. I was there.
Randall.
Abstention.
Waters.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of the both public hearing minutes and regular session minutes from April 20, April 2, 2020. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Randall, seconded by Mr. Hagerty. Discussion. Seeing none, we will call for a roll call vote. Hagerty.
Yes.
Noise Miller.
Yes.
Barnacle.
Yes.
Beleza.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Abstention.
Custance.
Yes.
Michelle Fitzgerald.
Abstain.
Pamela Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Iller.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Waters.
Abstain.
Goodwin.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is our financial report. Mrs. Boyd.
Alrighty, you have in your packet not quite the latest, but close to the latest. I was bringing some more off today. Now lots changed with the last vote. As we anticipated, there should be some lines here with positive balances. Main balances in the areas probably of utilities, some general supplies. We are in the midst now of processing year-end stipends, including spring sports, which clearly aren't going to happen. There was a little bit of pre-work done on some parts of the coaches, so we will recognize that. But in the next two weeks, we will be paying out or closing out all of the rest of the extracurricular and sports activities. So when we meet again the end of the month, I'll have a better feel for what the positive balances, what things will look like. And Erin and I have been talking about what we might either want to do at the end of the year to prepare for next school year, balancing that with leaving things in to turn into E and D, which will put us in a better place for two years from now. So it's still kind of moving along. Obviously, we don't have any huge concerns with getting through the end of this year within budget. Our bigger concerns are how to place us in good shape for what may or may not happen over the summer next year and then into the following fiscal year. Any questions?
Questions for Deb? Any questions on the financial report? Thank you, Mrs. Boyd.
If you want, while I have you, I can give you a little bit of an update also on cafeteria are the food bags, which I think most of you are aware. We've been pushing out food bags. Most of the preparation is happening at the high school and then being shipped off to the elementary schools where they're getting picked up. I just did, because of course we have this dysfunctional school district and actually have six districts. We look like we are one, but financially I'm chopping things up. So we've been doing all of the purchasing from Tantascia and then I'm billing out the five separate elementary school districts for supplies and food products. So I just did the first month and a half yesterday, and there's some interesting data to see. So in our first six weeks of serving breakfasts and lunches, we pushed out 13,000 meals. On average, 200 bags per day that have breakfast and lunch. We're moving into covering weekends because now that we got the okay, we can get reimbursed for weekend meals also. So we are serving or distributing twice a week on Mondays and Thursdays to cover weekend meals also. Interesting data of the bags we send out each day, somewhere between 200 and 220, 22% of them are secondary Tantascia kids. 22% are Burgess Elementary kids. 19% Brookfield Elementary. And then you go down from there with about 10%, which you would expect from Holland in Wales. So we're cruising along, we're doing the right thing. We are certainly covering, more than covering the food costs. So I had $17,000 worth of cost in the first month and a half. I think my just straw calculation looks like we should be getting $37,000 in reimbursement for those. So that's $20,000 to put towards salaries. Again, this isn't just Tantascia salaries, this is district-wide. So we are definitely still going to have some significant losses district-wide in the cafeteria revolving fund. And I'll come back to you folks in May and June with recommendations on how to cover that. They're doing a great job pushing these things out and serving especially the needy population. But in the end, we can't have our revolving fund in the hole. So I'm going to be looking, it's another thing, again, we'll look at our general fund. And if we've got surplus in some lines, it might make sense for us to pay some of these items in June and even May from the general fund or do some kind of transfer from school choice or something like that. But I'll come back to you with a recommendation.
Excuse me, Mike.
Yeah.
Deb a question?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Deb, I know how they're doing it in other school systems. And twice a week, families go and pick up supplies for the week, you know, for the couple days for breakfast and lunch. And then the middle of the week, they get breakfast and lunch. And would that be easier or more cost-effective?
That's exactly what we're doing now. Up until last week, up until last week, we were actually doing one bag on Mondays, only Mondays, and doing five days' worth of food in those bags. Then when two things happened, A, we finally got clearance to actually get reimbursed for these bags because for the first month or so, we were doing this with no guarantee of getting anything for them. We finally got that clearance right about the same time these sad news came out that we are not coming back yet. So next week is the first week, actually, we're going to do a Monday bag that has three days' worth of food and a Thursday bag that has four days. So they'll be getting a week's worth of food. We've already had one or two families that were having some struggles picking up a spent one or both days, especially one, you know, Monday seemed to be work. But now that this Thursday, there's concern about being able to get there because some of them work. So I'm talking to the collaborative bus driving crew. So mini buses or vans will help deliver where needed.
Nice, thank you, Deb.
Yep.
Other questions for Deb? Dan? No?
Yeah.
Did we notice Dan did join us somewhere?
Yes, Mr. Valcor is here, so we'll let the record state that. All right, great, thank you, Deb.
Yep.
We'll move to our staff reports. We've got a couple of donations that were being asked to accept. I'll entertain a motion to accept both the IT equipment from the town of Sturbridge for the technical high school and the laptop to the junior high school. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Barnacle made the motion and Mr. Goodwin seconded it. Great. Discussion on the donations.
I'd just like to thank the health, the technical division for having the insight to go into their supplies as well as the junior high that was able to supply the old raincoats for PPE at St. D's, I understand. So I just think it's wonderful that, I hope the children were somehow involved in that so that they're aware that it took place. Was it, I don't, I'm not sure.
I assume that it was communicated to the students because they certainly are part of the community that gave the donation to both Harrington for the initial PPE from nursing as well as from carpentry. We had some in '95, some of the masks, as well as honestly some gloves and masks and gowns from the science department and then the junior high here as well. So yeah, very, very proud.
And a student, the eighth grader who made the masks, that was noted in our notes.
Yeah, Greg can speak to that.
Yeah, she should be commended, yeah.
Yeah, eighth grader Grace St. Laurent had sent me an email just with a picture of herself. She handmade created some masks for, donated on her own.
It's wonderful. Just shows the community. Thanks to everyone who made it happen.
Absolutely. All right, we'll call for a vote then on the donation acceptance. Mr. Hagerty.
Yes.
Mrs. Noise Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Barnacle.
Yes.
Beleza.
Yes.
Ms. Cunningham.
Yes.
Ms. Custance.
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald, Michelle.
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgerald, Pam.
Yes.
Mr. Iller.
Yes.
Ms. Leo.
Yeah.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes.
Mr. Valcor.
Yes.
Mrs. Waters.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Aye.
Motion carries. Wonderful. All right, we will move to the school improvement plans review.
Mr. Sturgis, you want to start?
Mr. Sturgis, go for it.
Sure, so we had a small committee this year, or school council, I should say, but everyone has actively participated in. As you see a couple of the highlights, but we tried to clean it up a little bit and take out a lot of the things that were redundant, just kind of ongoing things. There's a lot of things that have to remain in there. But we wanted to focus a lot on moving forward into the college and the career readiness field, which you'll find in goal two. And so that's the big focus next year is getting kind of guidance counselors into classrooms and working on building kids' portfolios and starting to get into seventh and eighth grade so that they can have a clear path to, not necessarily an exact career, but an idea of where they're kind of headed and what they're interested in. And so there's nothing that'll come out of that that tells them you're going to be doing this in the future. Just a little roadmap for them. I wanted to start in seventh grade as well so that we can get them thinking about which high school if they wanted to go, if they're interested in the vocational side of the high school, the regular Tantascia high school, so they can make an informed decision on that. And so, and then there's other goals in there around social, emotional things just as the way of the world and trying to move forward and make sure we're doing everything we can to use all our resources to be prepared to help kids with the ongoing mental health kind of world and field we're dealing with it these days. So I'm happy to field any questions.
Are there questions for Mr. Sturgis?
I have one. Greg, I was just wondering, under history, it mentions the students learning about state government. I believe it was limited to states, if I recall correctly. It's like one of the first couple. And I was wondering if it was going to include more than just state government.
Yeah, so right now, our curriculum is a seventh grade does more of a world history, world government type in seventh grade, and they start and they cover government from Roman Empire to Greece and a wide variety of things. And then as they go into eighth grade, there is more of American history and American government. It's a lot less state, but with the civics initiative, more state conversation than there probably has been in the past. But that's just more of, they're still doing United States government lessons and activities and as well as trying to address the civics curriculum that is coming or is not coming, is here. Make sure kids are up to date on current events as well.
Thank you.
Are there questions for Mr. Sturgis? All right, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
And the high school.
Mr. Lucas?
Sure. I think everybody has a copy correct in front of it. A lot of focus for our school improvement plan, and this was a great group of parents and teachers working together. Evolved, if you look at all the different standards around social, emotional learning, SEL, we formed a task force last summer here at the high school, spent several days together as a group, 25 teachers, a couple of books that we've read together. And we're trying to really get up to speed with social, emotional learning. Teachers have been great so far. So you'll notice throughout, every department has that as one of their goals and their focus, along with other things. We've tried to do that throughout the building. Every department has a plan for that this year and next year. And our goal is that by next year, everybody's incorporated five of the castle strands into their teaching and into their learning for our students. So hopefully, and we're looking at other opportunities for our kids as we go forward. I'll take any questions, any questions on the school improvement plan.
Mike? Can you share with us, who is on the committee that put together the plan?
Michelle Saramit, our former health teacher and nurse now, and Ms. Hellier and myself went through training that Erin was kind enough to put us through at Fort Devens last year, all during last year as our leadership corps. We shared that out with a group of 25 teachers that volunteered to be part of it, of our staff. Those teachers then spent two days professional development this summer, coming up with a plan for our building, what strengths did we have, where do we need to improve? We did a staff survey, we did some student surveys, and it's kind of really launched from there. It's been a real collaborative group effort. Adam Pop is here, he's on part of that, he's part of our team, as is Brandon in his shop also. So we feel like we've launched a good start so far for our staff and want to make this really part of what we have going on here at the high school and all our different curriculums.
How about parent involvement? It sounds like it was very much staff-driven.
Yeah, we haven't had a lot of staff involvement outside of our parent groups, but it's been pretty much staff-driven for the most part.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Are there questions for Mr. Lucas?
Or Mr. Wood, because those goals are encompassed. Just a reminder, if there's one document for the high school.
Okay.
Mark, was there anything else you wanted to add?
No, just for clarification, there are parents who do sit on the school council that have drafted up the school improvement plan also. So it's not the parents have.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
Oh yeah, of course, I thought you meant as far as SEL went built. We have an active group of parents that participate every year on the school improvement council, and this document is created with them completely. So they have a lot of input.
All right, thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you, principals. We will move to committee reports. Fortunately, we don't have students with us tonight, but we appreciate all that they're going through and continue to go through. Budget. Mrs. Noise Miller?
No meeting, no report, other than we had the public hearing last month. And that's it, moving forward at the moment.
All that information has been shared with everyone and it is crickets out there. It's really all about towns figuring out when to have their town meetings. So, you know, it's, I don't know, everyone's waiting for the other one to go first and everyone's waiting for the state who also will likely not have their budget done. But last I heard is the hope is that the next step is using the House and the House's recommendation. So all eyes are on that in hopes of at least getting a feel for what they land on for revenue projections before we know, you know, that'll be a better gauge of what the priorities are given the reduced revenue projections and how education comes out of it. But in past years, the governor's budget has always been the lowest and we've been able to count on that and move up. But that is not likely the case this year. So we're just all in a holding pattern and yet at the same time trying to prepare for bad things.
And normally, this would have been the week that the House would have been needing to negotiate and put forward their budget. But obviously, they're barred from meeting with the governor's, the governor's mandate being now extended May 18. So I know there were some discussions about the possibility of remote voting for the legislature, but that is obviously, as you can imagine, a fairly contentious issue. So that's the current kind of focus. So with the governor's extension to the 18th of May and more than likely in the next couple of weeks, understanding what that guidance means beyond the 18th, that will dictate whether the legislature comes back into some type of a normal session and then also will slightly dictate what the town meeting schedule looks like. So the first town meeting currently on the schedule is Wales, and that's May 20, which is two days after the governor's most recent extension. So the town of Wales will be evaluating what post-18th guidance looks like from the governor and whether, you know, a town meeting would be permitted under whatever the post-18th guidance is because it won't just simply be, we go from what we're currently in to wide open. There will be phasing as there is across a number of other states. And so that will dictate whether or not the Wales town meeting can happen on the 20th. Should the guidance be such that, that, you know, a town meeting would be permitted, I can tell you, knowing the Wales town moderator pretty well, it will happen. So that is all we know at this time. So pending it's permitted and there's no legal reason to not proceed, the Wales town meeting will happen on May 20.
Mike?
Yeah.
I ask a question, Sue Waters. I don't know whether it's Erin or Deb. Because of the delay of townspeople needing to pay their taxes, et cetera, are towns going to be able to pay their dues to our school system as in the past, or might that be a problem?
Yeah, we can be prepared for anything. I haven't gotten any reach out from any treasurers yet. Regional agreement requires them to pay every two months.
Okay.
So the last payment would be May 15 due. They started in July. So I think everyone was pretty caught up prior to that. So it'll be interesting to see whether folks can pay in May, if, you know, if it takes till June. Obviously, the push will be to get funds in by June 30 because it's the close of our fiscal year and we want that. But that all being said and done, all of the rules have been thrown out the window.
Right.
Now, if someone called and said, I need to make the payment on July 1 instead of May 15, we can still record that. But then another payment comes up, May 15, and next year, I think it's going to be more of a concern than this year, quite frankly. I'm kind of anticipating that we may get through this year fine, but next year is when things are going to get even rougher.
You mean September 21?
Yeah, I think, you know, even a lot of towns have gotten a lot of their revenues except for the taxes, but a lot of the tax bills have just gone out. So, you know, a good number of folks had paid. Some might be struggling, but then when they start working on trying to figure out, I mean, they're going to have a hard time even certifying next year and figuring out how to get their budgets at all in time to do all that. So I'm just a little worried that when it comes to revenue projections,
Right.
they're really going to be struggling to figure out what revenue can they predict, plan on getting, and everybody's going to be in the same boat. It is just the strangest thing. We can all think of at least 10 different scenarios that could happen and we don't know which one to try and prepare for.
Yeah.
So we're just thinking it all and yet it's crazy because we're just paralyzed, like we don't know which way to go. So, you know, obviously, we wouldn't be doing our jobs if we weren't sitting here already saying, okay, if we get a terrible cut, where are we going to go? We're going to come back, we'll be ready to come back to you with recommendations. But at the same time, education could still be considered a priority and it could maybe be not that bad. We don't know.
Correct. Would a possibility be renegotiating contracts? Is that a possibility?
Say that again.
As has happened in other professions, renegotiation of contracts?
Well, I mean, the contract drives, if there are budget cuts, that's something that would first start with the budget subcommittee and then the full committee. Anything is possible. I mean, first you look at whether you need to have reductions and sometimes instead of reductions enforced, you can ask or suggest some renegotiation of contract. But I'm not sure that's where we would go first. We first see, you know, what do we need to cut and what could we come up with recommendations? And if it got to the point where.
And I think it's also going to really be dictated upon what revenues ultimately look like. The reality of it is, the budget process we're going to be going through is going to be in phases, just like what we're going through with the reopening. You know, and such that we've produced a budget at this point that if all times were perfect, we felt really confident in. All of our member towns will have to do the same thing by July 1, theoretically, unless they make some type of an adjustment legally. So, you know, that's kind of phase one. Then the reality of it is, you know, a couple of months into the new fiscal year, we're going to start to have a better sense of what the economic impacts look like. we're going to start to have a better sense of what the economic impacts look like. That's going to impact local receipts, that's going to impact local taxes, that's going to ultimately determine what, you know, what the towns have in terms of available funds. That's going to require an exercise among all communities to potentially make adjustments to the budgets they produce, similar to what it may require us to do. But I think part of it is, we just don't know what we don't know. So, you know, part of the guidance I've been offering my town, and that I think we've been definitely following here, is proceeding status quo with, you know, pushing our budget forward that we feel really confident in. And as more guidance comes out, both from the state and also as we see what the local tax situation is of our communities, coming back to the table and making adjustments and being agile, that's what we're going to have to do. But I don't think it serves anybody any benefit to start talking about what types of cuts and where we would make cuts.
Oh, no, right, not at all.
It's too premature for that.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about our faculty and our staff and how we could best serve them.
Yeah, and we're very blessed at the Tantasca level with a staff and faculty that like to partner with us, which is great. Some of our local folks felt the same way. We clearly don't have that at the local level in some cases, but at the Tantasca level, they're really wonderful partners. So we're very blessed there.
I think too, that we need to really keep in mind, and I hope the citizens of our five towns will keep it in mind as well, how much, despite the fact that I think our teachers did a hell of a job, how much our kids missed in terms of education this year. And the fact that our teachers are going to be faced with a lot of challenges in the next few years dealing with the aftermath of this damn thing. So, you know, while I have my concerns about our faculty and and the town finances, I also feel it's very important that we keep very much in our view our kids and what's virtually happened to them in the last few months.
Yes.
Yep, totally agree with all of that.
Yeah.
All right, let's move back to committee reports. Sue, actually, is there a report from technical?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Mrs. Barnacle, curriculum?
Yes, we met on Monday night in a virtual meeting, and we had basically two topics on the agenda. One was AP testing and how it's now going online. So Mike Lucas was there and filled us in on that. We also talked about remote learning. Because that's on the agenda tonight, and I know Erin's doing a full report on it, I'm not going to go into what we actually discussed at that meeting, but it was virtual, so you can go back and look at it if you wanted to.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Thanks.
Thank you. Bylaw and policy, Michelle?
I was not able to be at the April 2nd meeting. I'm not sure if anyone mentioned, we last had a meeting on February 27th. That was limited to discussing our sports policies. It was really just a start to that discussion. We're not ready to bring anything forward to the full committee on that. We'll carry that over to next year, along with our review of A to Z policies. We only have one full committee meeting left this year, so to start something in the pipe now that we won't be able to finish may not make sense. So we probably will not meet again to start our policy reviews until the next academic year, unless there is something that requires our attention beforehand, so.
And there may be, I mean...
Yep.
Yeah, well, that's just it. Maybe, and we, Kevin and I have been in contact about that, and whether there's anything that we have to consider, and obviously, if there is, we'll meet. We may have one more meeting just to kind of get ourselves oriented for next year and see where we finished and where we're going. But I don't expect to have the same kind of review of policies that we've had up to this point this year.
Yeah, fortunately, we had cleaned through all of second readings in our big batches, so as I looked through, there wasn't the next batch, we're just continuing down the alphabet, other than just buttoning up the athletics, so my thought is...
Rather than have a first reading in May and then carry it over to September,
Right.
we'll just start fresh.
Yeah, but we had talked all along about perhaps doing some work over the summer, so after the 18th, you know, if we finally get to the point where we can even, the six or seven of us meet with some distance amongst us and plan one or two meetings over the summer, we may come back pretty strong in the fall with a couple of pages of new policies.
So those on the subcommittee, we can expect we'll have at least one more meeting, a virtual meeting at least, to kind of get this plan in place and see if we can move forward
Okay.
the 18th. So Deb and I will be sending something out about that.
Thanks, Michelle. All right, and then finally, building a physical plant. Mrs. Leo, anything to report?
No report, no meeting.
Great, thank you. We'll move to Public Access 1. Is anybody that wishes to say? Mr. Pop, I will tell you that your tweets and all the wonderful recipes you keep putting up on Twitter are are helping me think about how to eat better during these times, so thank you for that.
So we've noticed, Mr. Valenzuela.
Actually, I'm down seven pounds, so don't go there, but but William's got to get all of his wax in tonight, I guess, so. All right, we'll move to Communications. There are a couple of items in the packet for you. There was a school board article, there were also some graduatory letters that were directed out of this committee, as well as the service communication, and of course, Deb spoke about that earlier. Are there any questions about the communication items that were in your packet?
I didn't mention earlier, just in there FYI, in addition to the bags of food, Missy, our cafeteria director, is also including these one pages in every single bag that has the list of food on one side, and she comes up with a little activity for the kids on the backside. So I wanted to get you guys some samples of what's going out, because I think they're awesome.
That's great. Thanks for that, Deb. All right, we'll move to our superintendent's report. Dr. Nozak, an update on the remote learning plan?
Thank you. And then I have a couple other things just to update you on. First, hopefully you all received the updated information from the commissioner, April 24th. We received it, that was last Friday evening, and I think I sent it out maybe Monday. The good news is that with the new guidance, we feel that we're very well positioned to continue through the rest of the year, though certainly, as we've talked about, not ideal. I think we were extremely optimistic, cautiously optimistic, that we were going to be able to be back with the students. It's certainly what we all hoped, however, clearly that's not the case any longer. So this additional guidance does take sort of go to phase three, if you will, and say, "How can you enhance what you're doing for instruction?" The state has identified power standards, or at least standards that really need to be mastered, taught and mastered prior to going to the next grade, and they broke it out by math, science, social studies, and language arts. So what they're telling us is they want us to focus on that, can be done through synchronous or asynchronous. They suggest if there is ever a live stream or live instruction, that it certainly be recorded and posted, understanding that families have very different schedules. There could be families with multiple children who are trying to work at the same time. Some families have parents who are home to support, some don't, or if they're home, because they're working from home, they have their job, their own job to do. So trying to recognize that it can't be a one-size-fits-all, but challenging us to step up to the next level, make sure that we are doing instruction in support of standards, hopeful mastery, so that children can go to the next grade level, if you will. The commissioner also focuses greatly on highlighting the need to remain connected to children and families. This, we see a lot, making sure that teachers are checking in with students. We just met as a leadership team on Monday, and we talked about really identifying families, what percent of families seem to be not accessing the opportunities that we have, and I'm really proud of all the work that everyone is doing. Students, families, faculty, staff, administration, there's been great community support in trying to help students access the most that they can from school. We talked about it last month, obviously taking our institution and how we deliver our product and simply changing it fundamentally to a new system. It's not going to be flawless, but really proud of all the work that everyone has done to keep that up to date. The MCAS, as you know, I forwarded that information, has been suspended for the year. We just received additional information around competency determination, meaning seniors who may not have passed or were still in the retake process or juniors, so we'll receive additional guidance on that as well. So, again, we're well-positioned here in this district to continue to move forward with the remote learning through the end of the year. And I don't know if anybody has any specific questions on that document or on our service delivery?
Yeah, I have a couple on, Erin, maybe you can't answer them. You made reference to the percentage of students who may not be able to access remote learning. Do we have any idea what percentage of that would be the case in the region? And do we have any indication also what the reasoning is? Is it lack of internet access, or just?
Yeah, it's probably more family situation. We have taken care of, we believe, all of the internet access or device. Greg, Mike, and Mark have distributed a great number of Chromebooks. We're almost out of them here in the district for families who need them. And then the principals have also worked to secure internet access, either through Spectrum or through Cox Internet. We actually had a citizen who volunteered to purchase some hotspots for children who might not be able to have it. So we feel like, from a technological standpoint, that we have communicated that clearly to folks, that we are here to support them, to do everything we can, to the point where some of our principals actually called Spectrum Charter. I mean, we're heavily advocating and trying to walk families through the process of getting that. So it's more, I would say, it's more children for whom this is truly not ideal. It's hard for them to engage. School might be a challenge, even in brick and mortar. So when you're in a really stressful situation of being home and not having access to what is a typical day, it could be really, really hard. Our guidance folks have done a tremendous job at reaching out to families, offering support. Our ELL children, our ELL teacher Johnny Vargas has done home visits. We have teachers doing home visits to try and connect with those kids who just might need just a little bit more to try and get them to remain engaged. But as adults, we're all experiencing the stress here. I'm sure you all, with your works and your lives, are experiencing the stress. So kids who have those challenges anyway, it's not been ideal for them, and that makes us sad, but we're just going to, you know, keep on trying to reach out. I'd say the statistic we kind of all came to at all of our districts was really low, kind of in the 1%, 2%, so not what we felt was overwhelming.
Good, that's encouraging. Thank you.
Hi, this is Jen. I can speak to one of the children that has, like Dr. Nozak was saying, having issues with being able to function on the online environment, but we had the teacher and Mr. Ledbetter reach out to us, and we're working with them weekly on making sure that we're following the schedule of what needs to be done. So they are reaching that group of small percentage that have it, because my daughter, she can't, she's not the... she can't function with it for some reason. We can't get that working for us. So we had the teacher and Mr. Ledbetter reach out to us, and it's been working out just fine. And keeping up with the, Mrs. Kane, you know, we send her assignments of what she's doing and how it's going, so it's been working out for us, and we're in that, yeah.
That's great.
I have a question about any of our seniors who might be at risk for not graduating. Are they, are you doing credit recovery for courses that they were failing through Q3?
I'd have Mike or Mark just, if you don't mind hopping in and speaking to that.
Yeah, we have a lot of options for kids. We're working with, we had a lot of kids, not a lot of kids, we had some seniors at risk who we had set up for some online additional courses to improve upon their credit standing. We're trying to get them to focus right now on the classes they're in this semester to get through those, because we're going to have a little bit of time now. One thing we have to discuss is a graduation potential date, but we are giving options for those kids. Mark and I are reaching out to a lot of our seniors. We've had meetings with guidance gone over that. Most of them are in very good shape. I'm visiting one of them tomorrow that I'm concerned about with our ELL teacher also, and the English teacher. We're going to go and hang up on the child and the parents, and hopefully get her back on the track. She was great for a couple of weeks, but has kind of fallen off for a couple of weeks and doesn't really want to be engaged. So we're going to try to get her motivated tomorrow.
Okay, and what about the competency determination? We have to wait, obviously, until we get the additional guidance? Okay.
I think we were still in very good shape, and both Mike or Mark could speak to that with very low numbers, which is great news. But yeah, we'll wait for that supplemental guidance from Desi and see what we have to do.
There's only a handful of seniors that we're down to that we're really worried about. Most of the ones that were having trouble are plugging away and do want to graduate, so that's the good news.
Thank you.
While Mike's on the hot seat there, can you share with us, Mike, maybe some of the things that are going on with respect to the senior class as far as, you know, making them feel a wee bit special? I've been following some of the online chatter and it sounds like they've got some, you know, a lot of fantastic plans and process. And I was just curious where you were in terms of planning graduation and so forth.
Yeah, and we have a senior lawn sign appreciation program going now. We had a nice donation from a community member for the first 100 signs from a food bank. So we're going to be able to, we've already sold over 100 signs. We're only a couple of days in.
I just can't figure out how to order the damn thing, Mike, so.
Yeah. I know several committee members ordered them already, which is greatly appreciated. All proceeds will go to local food banks, so that's one thing we've done as an activity. The Booster Club has decided to gift all of the senior sports athletes with a special sign commemorating them. Those have been ordered, and those will be in in a week or two. We have that going on. We're trying to work through the senior class. I've met with them for a couple of Fridays now. They overwhelmingly would prefer some sort of live graduation as opposed to a virtual graduation. So one of the things we'd love to see, if it's possible, is to do a graduation. I've spoken to our turf company. We could host a graduation in the stadium outside. It is possible. We do have the required airs to do it that would not damage the field. I'm looking at dates, possibly July 25th, 26th. I know several other schools announced recently that they're doing late July, early August, also outside on their football stadium. How many people could come as a guest? I don't know. That's a bigger discussion for this group. But at this point, it seems like we probably, we obviously can't have graduation on May 31st, and definitely can't have it indoors then, but possibly moving it outside to July 25th or 26th, I think, might be a good time to discuss that.
Thank you, Mike. When are seniors officially done with classes?
May 20th is their last day, so we're also in the works of planning when they can come in, get their cap and gown, drop off their books. We want to take care of them first, Bill, and then we'll eventually do that for our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors when we get into June. But we're going to try to plan that out carefully, so that it's, what we're still practicing, safe conditions and social distancing.
Right. Erin, when will the rest of our students, when will be the formal last day?
We're going to get to the, we're going to get to the school calendar as an...
Okay, all right, thank you, Mike.
Hold on that. Yeah. Other questions for Erin on her report? We've got some new business we've got to tackle, so other questions for Erin?
I also have just a few other updates, if you don't mind. Some really great news. Last Friday afternoon, we were notified that we had received a Safer Schools and Communities grant, local equipment and technology grant. We actually received one of these last year. You recall, a few months ago, we had talked about a few more enhanced security mechanisms, and the committee had authorized some small funding of that through some of the rural aid. I want to thank Greg for picking up the mantle here, Greg Russo, and putting forward a full plan and applying for the Safer Schools grant. We actually both thought that perhaps they would just be done for the year, and they weren't going to issue them, but we were notified Friday that we received $50,000.
Wow.
We applied for about $90,000, a little bit north of $90,000, so we were happy to get 50%. But I did find out later Friday evening that these grants were capped at $50,000, so we actually received the maximum that they could get, so. So more details coming on that, but really wonderful news. And again, thank, thank Greg for his work on that and our IT folks. The Windows and Doors Project is indeed moving forward. We still meet virtually every other week. We have done a poll test, a sort of a mock-up, if you will, for the Windows and Doors. The crew came in, followed all of the CDC and the state requirements. We're making any vendor who comes in, we just had our fire inspection come in as well, put in writing to us that they are aware of all the recommendations, that they have PPEs, they understand the social distancing and everything. And then we have a team, a custodial team that follows right behind them. Most of these vendors actually say they will clean after themselves, but we always like to make sure that, that we have folks there to do, to do that. So the Windows and Doors continue to move forward. We are right on schedule to start, which I believe, I think it was Monday, the 15th or possibly the following week. So that's really good news. We have not heard anything negative regarding funding. So we are in the queue and look forward to completing that this summer. So I'll give you more info as that becomes available. The Student Opportunity Act, this was the last committee that actually, we hadn't worked on the plan. The commissioner has said, if you haven't worked on the plan yet, we did draft the plan and I worked with the principals during leadership to come up with the plan. He just said, don't submit them, just put, put that on hold. The extension goes through May, but at this point, if you recall, the Student Opportunity Act was to codify how we were gonna spend all that extra Chapter 70 money that came with the Student Opportunity Act. So I think, I suspect that's why he said, just don't worry about it. So that plan may come on our May 26th agenda or it may not, depending on guidance that we have. We have done all five elementary districts planned, so Tantasco is the only one that we are waiting on just due to timing. Deb referenced, we're, we're hoping that by the May 26th school committee meeting, we will have a better sense of finances. Right now, crickets is, is beyond what, what it is. We're just hearing nothing as far as, it's too hard to tell people. And I'm, I'm feeling that even if somebody tells you there's gonna, we're gonna be okay or it's gonna be completely bleak, it really, nobody knows truly. Following May 18th, we'll have a better sense of what the governor intends as far as opening up plans and then we may have an understanding. But at this point, I think Mike said it extremely well. We're putting forward our budgets. Our information has been sent to every town. They know what it is and we're just gonna wait. We're just gonna wait and see and deal with any issues that arise as, as we have. The teacher evaluation process, I think I'm just looking for guidance if you're okay and, and don't really, while it would typically be called a substantive change, given the timing and the situation, I'm working with the unions around what are we gonna do for language for the educator evaluation system? Obviously, as March 13th was our last typical day of school, it would certainly not be fair to assess anybody or evaluate anybody outside of school, but we might need to tweak some language. So if the committee is okay, as you have been in the six years since the evaluation system moved forward, I'm happy to continue that work with the unions. And again, I suspect it will be in partnership as, as most of, of the work we do is. So if everyone's okay with that, I'd like to continue with that, Mr. Chairman.
Hey Erin, a quick question on one of the items you brought up around the Windows and Door Projects. I know some districts that are doing some, that had some planned construction or renovation work have advanced that work, given the fact that the schools are closed.
Yeah.
Is there any potential of that for our project? Has that been broached by the construction?
Yeah, unfortunately, because the doors and windows are being ordered, they were ordered on time and it was with the old timeline, which is that Monday. So what we are able to do however, is use our custodial staff more efficiently as it relates to summer work. So they're able to move off what is their typical summer work and start doing painting, disinfecting all the carpets and things like that. So we're, we're hopeful that that will at least free up them to follow the, right behind the windows and doors. But no, unfortunately, not, not too much.
That's all right. Just, just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, no, we asked, yeah, it'd be great if we could. We were kind of a little bit excited, but.
Great. Any questions for Dr. Nozek on her report?
Thanks again to everybody for all their hard work.
I'd like to thank Erin.
Thank you.
For all her hard work.
Yeah, me too.
And coordinating with the teachers and the families and the support you've offered. Thank you, Erin.
Well, thanks. I haven't, it's all been really building based. It's been there on the front lines. And again, we're fortunate to be in the district we're in and I can't say that enough from the staff to the students' families, the support of our school committees. We're extremely fortunate and I appreciate that very much. Yeah, thank you.
Great.
I will pass on your thanks to everybody.
All right, we have a couple of quick items under new business, one of which will require a vote. Just a quick update around the superintendent evaluation process. So you just, of course, heard Dr. Nozek speak to the teacher evaluation process. We too have the superintendent evaluation process that we would normally have already begun because of the fact that we typically try to coordinate that in a way that coincides with the town of Sturbridge election. That election in Sturbridge has been postponed and I don't expect we would have much change on this committee anyway. So the good news is, you know, we'll, we'll be able to proceed with a little bit of an abbreviated timeline around the evaluation process. We have taken your feedback that's been given the last couple of years. As you know, we made some really significant structural changes to how we evaluate the superintendent and we've moved to, I think, what we believe to be a real best-in-class approach that really drives up and increases more participation of all of our committee members. Last year, the Tantasco participation rate was its highest ever, close to 90%, which was fantastic. I'd like to see us be able to hit 100% participation this year and hopefully we'll be able to do that. We also saw increased participation at the union level, but some more work Mrs. Cunningham and I have to do there to increase that participation. So we'll be communicating out the, kind of the, the details and the timeline and the link for all members to be able to, to log in and to, you know, fulfill that evaluation requirement. Again, we've moved to an automated approach. No longer do we do the, you know, the kind of the mail-in packet that we used to. It's all done online via link, which then allows us to be able to collate the, the details and report those out at a, at a joint meeting. So we'll be communicating that out to this committee and to all the elementary district committees. Erin, remind me, I think, coming up.
Yeah, hopefully it was theoretically supposed to be this week. When I worked with the superintendent eval and goal subcommittee, we had set that last week of April as the date things would go out. So things have gone a little off, off track, but I'm hopeful that by next week, that packet will, will go out and be sent. Greg has, is prepared to just kind of finalize the minimal changes to that Survey Monkey, that document you just referenced. There needs to be, you'll see when I do submit the information, a number of goals, I'll be able to give you an update as to where we were, but we simply, they're just not attainable. There won't be MCAS, so clearly there'll be no MCAS growth. The MSBA, we, we had planned a meeting, in fact, up through March 20th. So we had done that work. That's not gonna be able to happen. And then the district improvement plan. So it's gonna look different. The goals will not have been met in, in a number of instances and it's purely just a result of, of what we're dealing with now. But it will look very similar. It will have the rubric and just the narrative of the two highlights under the four standards. So it should, for folks who are veteran, and I think almost this, I think the whole crew is veteran or near veteran, it should be, I, I'm, we're hoping a streamlined process.
Yeah. And, you know, I think the good news is as the evaluation team has been meeting regularly for the last couple of years, you know, we've moved to, in some cases, some multi-year objectives and goals, you know, realizing that some of the things that we want to go do more strategically take more than just, you know, the seven months between the setting of the goals and the evaluation. So to Erin's point, some of it is showing some progress. Some of it, obviously, the progress may not be quite at the point we would have expected it given the COVID situation. But of course, if we were aware this would be coming up, we would probably be rating Dr. Nozek on our leadership around this topic, which would be off the charts. So, you know, we'll be circulating that out to all of you. We'll be clear on the timeline and really, really want to drive 100% participation. We got so close last year. I think we only had two members that didn't respond. I promised this year that if we had only two members, I would announce them and with virtual meetings, we could put your pictures up. So let's hope that we don't have to do that. We really want you to participate. So, and some of you, as you know, I, I won't, won't worry if I have to call or text and hound you. So more to come on that. And if you have questions as you receive that or you need, you know, some guidance or support, you know, I'm available and so is Mrs. Cunningham. All right, we'll quickly move to the final item, which is just going to be an adjustment to the, to the school calendar. As you know, we, we set the school calendar, you know, in, typically in the fall. We codify that based upon the planning that we do in our, in our spring meeting, clearly with, you know, with, with the situation we faced and some of the, the adjustments that we've had to make real time. Some of this is just kind of codifying really what we've already done and then it'll also really kind of dictate what the last day of school will be. I just want to also, you know, thank Mr. Pop and his, in, in his partnership and leadership. You know, we obviously had in the middle of all of this, a scheduled school vacation. You know, we were able to partner with Mr. Pop and really work at a compromise to be able to keep the kids that had finally caught a rhythm, still getting some support throughout the April vacation and we wouldn't have been able to do that with Adams' support and guidance. So we appreciate that. And so Dr. Nozek, why don't I just quickly turn it to you to kind of outline what it is we're looking to generate a motion on and then we can go ahead and take a vote to codify that.
Thank you. When, when we did have to face whether we would have April vacation or honestly Good, Good Friday as well, if you recall, was a school calendar holiday, but it was the first Friday of that second phase of, of full onboarded remote learning. The teachers felt that that first week, we, they really wanted to support the students. In fact, a number, especially the high school, the way their schedule worked, it was office hours and many, many staff said, well, even if it's a holiday, we're, this is our first office hours, of course, we're gonna communicate with our students. So while I know everybody is tired and, and I appreciate so much the work that, that everyone, again, teachers, faculty, staff, administrators have done because of that forward momentum and the support that the kids were getting, we tried to talk about how can we balance giving a few days off for everyone to kind of catch their breath, those who are trying to teach with their own children at home, but continue to support the students. And again, so proud that our, our staff said absolutely. I worked with the six union presidents and they said, you know, a partial few days, a couple of days off, few days on, seems like a, a great compromise. So we did come up with that. We purposely didn't talk about what the last day of school would be. It really, for hopeful reasons, it was truly, truly felt that if we simply brought it up as a time to change the calendar, we'd have changed it and said, okay, we're gonna work, you know, everybody's gonna work 10-month employees, the three days of April vacation and Good Friday and we'll be out on Friday, June 12th. But numbers of the teachers had come forward and suggested that they wanted to keep flexibility open so that if school did come back for June and we were able to have two weeks with kids, wouldn't it be nice if we maybe took two days off in May and made up those two kid FaceTime days in June? Unfortunately, again, we're, we're faced with the reality that that is not the case. We will not be seeing our students again in front of us academically through the end of the year. So we are now at the point where the four extra days worked in April, three vacation and the holiday put us at the last student day being Friday, June 12th, 180th instructional day. The teachers have a third professional development day, so that will be Monday, the 15th, which will actually be an opportunity, maybe even in person, depending on again, what the guidance we receive from the governor, but at a minimum, a virtual staff meeting to kind of wrap up the year and have some good conversations about what summer is gonna look like as well as what the fall will look like. So that's it. Long answer to a short question, but Friday, June 12th will be the last student day, last faculty day will be Monday, the 15th of June.
I'd please have a motion to codify that.
So moved.
Had you made the motion, Mrs. Barnacle has seconded it. Discussion? We'll call for a vote. Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mrs. Noiz Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Barnacle?
Yes.
Mrs. Beleza?
Yes.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yes.
Miss Custance?
Yes.
Mrs. Michelle Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Pamela Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Iller?
Yup, yup.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mrs. Leo, my God, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Been a long day. Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Valkor?
Aye.
Dan?
I said aye.
Oh, I didn't hear you, sorry. Mrs. Waters?
Yes.
And Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Great. That brings us to open forum. Is there anything that anybody from the committee wishes to bring up as a part of open forum? All right, well, folks, great to see you again, even in this, even in this type of forum. Still nice to see your faces. I'm doing a lot of these these days, so it's about as much personal contact as I get. So appreciate the participation, the engagement, the support to Erin, Deb and all of our principals and staff, just a huge thank you. And we'll continue forward and we'll hope for better days ahead, so.
We're crossing our fingers. We're a very distant but in-person meeting on the 26th.
Your lips to God's ears, Mrs. Boyd.
Which month is that?
May 26th, we will spread out in a larger area.
I, I, I don't know if I'll be able to go without giving William a big hug, so.
Oh, boy.
We'll have to get ready to roll.
We'll mask you both up. A joint meeting, a reminder.
My question on graduation. Support to move it to July, is that okay?
What's that, Michael?
For graduation, just looking at options to move it to July. Were there any more thoughts on that?
No.
No, I mean, I, I think.
Do what you need to.
Postponing is better than canceling.
We don't want to cancel. We definitely want to give the kids some sort of real graduation.
Yeah.
I think July 25th offers the opportunity, if it's a terrible weather day, we could have it on the 26th. It's gonna be hot. We do it at 9:00 AM. Do the best we can, get all the kids separated on the football field. Obviously, if things are better in situation, parents also attend, depending on where we are, maybe extended families, intimate family, we'll see what happens. But I think that's probably gonna be our plan.
Thank you for July 25th. That's my niece's birthday and she'll graduate, so that's a good one.
That's a, that's a nice date, but I'm wondering, should you have an August just in case?
Yeah, I mean, we could have backup dates. I don't, I don't know. I think the seniors really would love to, to know that they're gonna have something and it would be great for them, I think, motivation wise, to get them a date soon. And obviously, if things worsen, we could postpone, but I think it would be great for their psyches if we could give them something.
Sure.
It would be nice if it could get in before they head to college.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what we want. Mike, my only, my only feedback would be, I think the 25th sounds good tentatively, but I, I do believe we ought to wait till the governor announces his phasing, which will be probably the week prior to the 18th of this month. So I'd wait a couple of weeks.
Okay.
For making the announcement because I think what you're gonna see out of the governor is some pretty, pretty strict guidance around what the phasing looks like and that will dictate whether the 25th or August might be more reasonable. So I, I, I think if you waited a couple more weeks to have that guidance, you'd feel better about making that decision.
Sure. And maybe some of the speeches could be abbreviated a bit like the chairman of the school committees.
Yes.
Yeah, because my two-minute speech is so long. Bill, for that, it's gonna be longer now, just you have to sit in the sun. I, I. It's already written, you've, you've given it.
Likes that.
It's already written.
Pull out one from the files.
I, I think we'll make this one a little bit more special, I think. And, and I, I will say, I love that even in the face of this challenge, we're able to finally return to our roots and have this outside. I think it's great. to finally return to our roots and have this outside. I think it's great. Was there a question?
Megan.
Go ahead, Megan.
Have, have any other schools actually announced? That was Michelle.
Michelle's asking, have any other schools actually announced the new date?
I can hear you.
Some have Michelle. Yes.
Some have, yes.
Some have done late July, some have done early August.
Yeah. Okay.
Good luck, Mike.
Thank you.
So the question is not whether we're going to try, go ahead. The question, the question is whether it's going to happen on that date, not whether we're going to try and have a live graduation.
Correct.
That's right.
I think it's great to offer our kids something real. They overwhelmingly want something where they're brought together. The idea being on the stadium is that we can separate them. There's fresh air. The sun will be shining, which is not good for coronavirus. We know that. And we can keep them, you know, they can really do this without even coming in the building. We can use different parking lots and really coordinate in a way that is probably very safe theoretically. Depending on how we are, where we're at with COVID-19 would depend on whether or not, you know, both parents could attend or whatever. I know some schools are doing students only, some are doing students with parents only. It just depends on where you're at.
Okay.
Dr. Nozak, we're. Sorry, mine was a different question. I thought I was, I heard Dr. Nozak, she was going to mention about the joint school committee meeting and I.
Reminder that our, you all made the motion a number of months ago that the joint meeting would be May 26th at 6:00 PM. I believe that's today, right? My Tuesday.
Yeah, that's right.
And the Tantascul meeting would be sort of a combined May and June immediately following. So the joint will be at 6:00 PM, Tuesday, the 26th, and the regular Tantascul meeting at 7:00 PM. And again, fingers crossed, even if we have to be in a, in the gym ourselves or in the cafeteria, you know, we're, we're hopeful it will be in person. But if not, this works well.
Thank you.
The meeting's the 26th. Whether it's virtual or not, will provide that guidance, you know, within the meeting itself. But yeah, Mike, I think to close out on your question, obviously, complete support and overwhelming consensus, and I've spoken to Erin about this personally, an in-person graduation, whenever it has to be to make it happen. My only perspective is we're, we're not far away from what the strict guidance will be of the governor and that might be able to give you a definitive on whether it's the 25th of July or the first week or two in August. So.
Yeah, I think, I think we can wait. That's fine. I think, but the other concern is August. Well, we don't know if families will travel away, but kids going off to college and starting jobs and going to the military. That's what I was hoping for, the end of July to get in before kids go do that.
I think that's the ideal date that we would all love to see. Yeah, for sure.
We'll leave it tentative and we'll wait to announce something till we hear more from the governor.
Good.
Great. Awesome. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Mr. Haggerty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Barnacle is, oh, I guess we do have to do a roll call vote. Mr. Haggerty?
Yes.
Mrs. Noiz Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Barnacle?
Yes.
Mrs. Belezza?
Yes.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yes.
Ms. Custance?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgerald, Michelle? Ms. Fitzgerald, Pamela?
Yes.
Mr. Iller?
Yes.
Mrs. Leo?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Valcor?
Hi.
Mrs. Waters?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Thanks so much, everybody. Have a great, have a great rest of the evening and a great rest of the week. Stay safe. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Care, everyone.